Live on YouTube and UGTV will start in about a minute. All right, live on UGTV.
Good afternoon. Before I call the meeting to order, I want to announce that due to COVID-19, we have individuals attending remotely. All participants joining by phone should mute their phones when not speaking to avoid background noise during the meeting. Please make sure that you announce yourself by name and title every time you speak, so the public that is participating knows who is speaking. This is critical, given the number of remote participants and his current guidance from the Kansas Attorney General. I call the meeting to order to announce the meeting and call the roll.
A special session is being held on Thursday, August 27, 2020, at 5:00 PM for a COVID-19 update and the Central Avenue Master Plan. Roll call. Burrows?
Aye.
Townsend?
Here.
Here.
McKeonan?
Here.
Ramirez?
Here.
Johnson? Kane?
Here.
Markley?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Ilbrook?
Here.
Bynum?
Here.
Alvy?
Here. All right, tonight, we have an update regarding COVID-19 and the Central Avenue Master Plan. I'll turn it over to Mr. Bach.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, as noted tonight, and as we have done for the past five months, we come forward to the governing body, provide an update on where we're at with COVID-19, our numbers in the community and the impacts this is having. We also wanted to provide some additional update tonight regarding activities in the commission committee as we're looking at different orders that are out there, but it is clear there's no new order that we are issuing to the community. Nothing like that is intended tonight, nor was planned to come forward to the governing body. We would like to go through and talk about the situation that's going on in our community, and then if there were any necessary changes in the future, those would be ones that would come at a later date. With that, I'm going to turn this over to Julian Van Lu, our Director of the Health Department, and Dr. Griners and Corvo, who will be offering presentation this evening. Julian?
Thanks, Doug. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, for having us back once again for our COVID updates. Tonight, we're going to be pretty data-heavy, so we have a robust presentation for you with up-to-date information on our cases, deaths, and hospitalization, as well as testing, and as Doug alluded to, just some additional conversation about sports and youth activities. Dr. Greiner is actually going to get us started tonight, covering cases and deaths and the current situation.
Great. Thank you, Julian. Again, Alan Greiner here with Dr. Corvo. This first slide shows how we're doing in terms of our case rate. You can see the red square there that we're still double the KCMO infection rate, twice the rate in the state of Kansas, and three times the rate in Johnson County. We don't think that our rate is inflated because of more testing. Actually, KCMO is the only metro county that's doing more testing than we are, but again, our rate is significantly higher. Next slide. Also compared to the state of Kansas, Wyandotte, of course, makes up only 5% of the Kansas total population, but we have 14% of the total cases in the state and 26% of the total deaths, so that's all pretty disproportionate. Next slide. For our testing in the county, how many cases are we seeing per day? We're seeing approximately 45 now on a seven-day rolling average. That's an improvement, and we'll show you a graph that shows that in a minute. The death rate is relatively low compared to where it was, less than a half of a person dying each day. The percent positivity rate though remains extremely high. This is one of our major concerns, and we'll show you some other data about this. At the Health Department itself, our positivity rate of testing is 27% of all the tests we've done over the course of the pandemic, and in fact, it's going up in the last week, the two weeks, the last three days, the test positivity rate here at the Health Department has been 34%. Next slide. On our, again, on our rolling average of new cases, over there on the far right, you can see that we're at about 45 new cases per day. That's actually about where we were at the peak of the stay-at-home order, back there where you see the 44 on the left-hand side. We've come down a lot, and that's really positive. We think most of that decline that we've seen since middle of July is related to the mask order. So this is one of those things, we're always learning new information, and it really is a struggle, I think, for everyone to try to anticipate what we should be doing next. You can see stay-at-home order worked on the left. We got a huge decline in cases, and wearing masks has really worked as well. And next slide. Yeah, so this just highlights how we're back basically where we were at the peak during the stay-at-home order. Next slide. Yeah, so this shows that we know COVID-19 is most deadly for older adults, but it's exclusively deadly in the elderly. We've got about one out of five of the cases of mortality affecting folks that are under the age of 60, and we'll show you some more data from KU here in a minute. Next slide. This is KU Med Center data, and you can see, again, what I think this really points out is that the high numbers of deaths we had on the left there, we implemented the stay-at-home order, it made a dramatic impact on that. There was almost a month-long period at KU Med where there were virtually no deaths, and that's really changed in the last month to six weeks. You can see that there's those higher numbers. Now, that's a small number per day, per se, but the changing from stay-at-home order to where we are now has made a difference. Hopefully, the mask mandate, we don't see its effect probably till even later, so we might get a further decline in deaths with the mask order. Next slide. And we apologize for the way the bottom looks on here. We got this data from KU Med, and their computer program spits this out in a sort of odd way, but what we want to highlight is that in March and April, most of the deaths were in the 60, 70, 80, and 90-year-old age groups. You can see those percentages there. Next slide. But here in July and August, with the deaths that are occurring, a larger percentage of those are happening in 20-year-olds, 50-year-olds, 40-year-olds. We still got some occurring in 60 and 70 and 80-year-olds, but there's a little bit less of that, and we wonder whether older adults have actually changed their behavior better than some of our other population demographics. Next slide. Oh, I think I'm kicking it to Julian now to talk about testing, I believe.
Thanks, Dr. Greiner. We just want to give you a little update on how testing is going in the Health Department as well as in the county. One thing we want to make sure, we make clear this evening for our Commissioners and our community, is that the Centers for Disease Control, CDC, within the last couple of days, has issued new guidelines against testing close contacts of positive cases. We believe this is largely politically motivated, and this is not something that the Unified Government Public Health Department will be adopting, so we will continue, as we have done, to test close contacts of positive cases. That's obviously the clearest way to know who is positive from that initial case, and to do the contact tracing and hopefully break the chain of transmission. We have made a slight change to the way we do things in our testing. Previously, if you were a close contact to a positive case, we asked you to come in to be tested five to seven days from exposure. As everything, we continue to evaluate the most up-to-date research and science, and what has come out in the last couple of weeks has shown that we actually need to push that back a little bit. So we do invite people who are contacts of positive cases to come in for testing at the Health Department. We ask them to do that days seven to nine from exposure. That's when we get the best chance of identifying those positive cases. Many of you know, we've been working on validating saliva testing. We are hoping to finish this up within the next couple of weeks. It's taken significantly longer than we had hoped, but if that validation goes as well as we think it's going, we will be transitioning to doing that mode of testing, moving away from that fairly painful nasopharyngeal swab, which is our method right now. So more to come in coming weeks, but we're hopeful that certainly is a much more comfortable test for our residents. As always, just a reminder, folks get tested at the Health Department for free if they live or work in Wyandotte County, Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Wanted to show a little bit of a comparison in how well we are testing our community. You can see here, and I pulled this from the Mark Hub that they launched a few weeks ago, that Wyandotte County is second only to Kansas City, Missouri, in the total tests per 100,000 population. This is really great. It means that we are testing probably as well as we can. We could always do more, but the more we test, the more cases we can find and isolate and quarantine, and again, break that chain of transmission. So very proud of how our community has stepped up, not just in the Health Department, but the many pop-up test sites that are going on, showing that we are making an impact here when it comes to testing. However, given that, we are seeing a bit of a decrease in testing. So in the last few weeks, I think some of you already know this, the Health Department's testing on each day has significantly come down. So we're now testing on average about 65 folks a day, significantly lower than five or six weeks ago. Across the county, we're also seeing a decline, not quite as steep, but it certainly has come down in recent weeks. Across the county, our seven-day rolling average for number of tests that are being conducted is just shy of 400. So we continue to try to figure out, you know, what's really the cause, the root cause of this reduction in testing? Is it people experiencing fewer symptoms? Are there other barriers? So we continue to work with our Health Equity Task Force and other partners to make sure we're hearing what's being said on the ground and make sure that we're aware of any of those additional barriers that people are facing, or reasons why people aren't coming for testing. It's an evolving and continuing conversation. Across the county, our seven-day rolling average for percent positivity, again, this is the percent of tests that come back positive out of all the tests that are conducted. We've really hovered around this 20% range for the last many weeks. We're sitting today around 18% positivity. This is quite high if you compare it to other jurisdictions within the metro and across Kansas as well. This is for symptomatic and asymptomatic testing, so I think there's some conception that our percent positivity is significantly higher purely because we do not do asymptomatic testing in Wyandotte, and that's not entirely true. So we do asymptomatic testing at the Health Department and pop-up sites for contacts of positive cases. There's also a significant amount of asymptomatic testing that happens in our medical facilities, especially KU, our largest medical provider, so it is symptomatic and asymptomatic percent positivity and remains very high. Again, what we're showing here, what Dr. Greiner showed a little earlier, we're really trying to make sure that we are learning lessons from the decisions that we're making. So we're trying to find differences before and after we make decisions. So you can see here in the left box, testing symptomatic folks only. That's what we did at the very beginning of the outbreak at the Health Department. We really just tried to focus in on those folks who were experiencing symptoms. This was back in March and April before we knew a lot about COVID, a lot that we know now. We transitioned in May to testing symptomatic folks and asymptomatic folks who had been exposed, and you can see our rate went down, and then it has slowly climbed back up. So again, we're seeing that high percent positivity, and that is one of the reasons that worries us about school reopening and about a lot of the activities that are happening in our community. I'm going to shift here and send it over to Dr. Erin Corvo, who's going to speak to hospitalizations.
Thank you, Julian. Yeah, I wanted to highlight some data, again, that is out of our largest medical provider, KU Hospital, this evening. As you can see up at the top there, with, you know, going from April to May, June, July, and August, you can see COVID-positive patients admitted to the hospital certainly increasing. Next slide. I wanted to also bring everybody's attention to the fact that every day we're getting our numbers from our hospitals around in the community. Today, KU Hospital reported that they've got 27 positive COVID patients in the hospital, and actually, this is sort of a case of comparing apples and oranges. Not all of the hospitals report their data the same way. So at KU, the COVID-positive patients that they report are those that are still on isolation, so within that first 10 days of their infection, but that is not the total number of people in the hospital that have COVID. So we actually have 61 patients at this time at KU Hospital. Next slide. Also wanted to show some more data here, a very interesting trend that's occurred from early in the pandemic to later in the pandemic. So you can see here in the blue bars, which represents March and April, and underneath there at the bottom of the graph, you can see various comorbidities or conditions, underlying health conditions that people have who may be admitted to the hospital with COVID. Interestingly, in March and April, with the blue bars all the way over to the right, you can see when people have no underlying conditions, it was very rare that they were admitted to the hospital. However, the red bars now, as we look into July and August, show that, you know, the number of people admitted to the hospital with no conditions is actually increasing. So this is actually really very concerning trend to us here in the Health Department. Next slide. I want to talk a bit this evening about education. We're having some concerns around this in the community, as many of you have heard about. The first graphic here just shows that our youth age 0 to 19 years make up about almost 15% of all COVID-positive cases within Wyandotte County. And we compare that with people ages 60 and older who make up about 14.4% of the cases. Next slide. Just want to make the point here as well, we're finding, again, a disproportionate impact on our Hispanic or Latinx youth. As you can see here on the left side, we're seeing in our youth that over 65% of our cases identify as white, and on the right side here, you can see as ethnicity, that our Hispanic ethnicity is representing unfortunately a very large percentage of our cases. Next slide. One of the reasons that we're very concerned, you know, you may hear, "Well, our kids get the disease, but they're not getting that sick, and they're not dying from the disease." We do, however, have really significant concerns about kids getting the disease because we're starting to find that there are long-term effects, especially on children's cardiovascular health going forward. We're seeing that also in sort of their parents' age, sort of into the 30s, 40s, and 50s. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Greiner as well. There's been some really interesting research on this, and we really want to hammer home why we're still trying to prevent, you know, young people from getting this disease. It's just not safe for anybody to get it.
Thanks, Dr. Corvo, and we don't have another graph for you, but we've been talking a lot about a study that came out of Germany that was published earlier this month that showed in a group of 100 individuals who were approximately four months out from their infection with COVID-19, and this was a group of 40- to 60-year-old adult males in Germany, four months out from their infection with COVID. They did cardiac MRIs on those patients. We generally don't do MRIs on the heart because it shows us a ton of detail, and we usually don't even need that much detail to look at hearts, but because it gives you that much detail, you can see really what's going on with the individual muscle areas of the heart very well. They found that 78 out of 100 of those patients had persistent cardiac muscle motion deficits. So that's a staggeringly high number for people recovering from a viral illness. We know this virus does attack the heart in some patients very significantly. Some patients can go into florid heart failure, but having persistent cardiac issues is something that we worry about, and one of the reasons why it may look like at times we are overreacting to various things. In talking to some of our other staff here internally, we are constantly trying to walk a fine line between trying to be extremely cautious and use the science and data we know we have to protect everyone, but also allow freedoms, understanding that we are probably not going back to a stay-at-home order. We have to let people, hopefully, we have to get students back in the classroom safely. We think because of some of the methods we've learned about social distancing and mask mandates, that we can control this even with letting people do much more than we did during the stay-at-home order period, but it's really tough for us walking that fine line and trying to work with all of the individuals like you all in the Commission, as well as the general public, who all have their own individual concerns that are important. We just don't want to see a situation where we let activities like in-class schooling start again and might have a heart issue in some patients down the line that we feel could have been avoided with more careful planning and more detailed analysis of who's in contact with who. So sorry to go on so long. I'll turn it back over to you, Dr. Corvo.
All right, we'll move on here. We're going to bring forward this evening some concerns we've got about our kids returning back to school. Of course, as you know, we're just right around the corner from that, so after Labor Day, many of our kids, except of course for our USD 500 district, will be returning for 50% capacity in class learning. You know, we've been working for a very long time throughout the summer months, and here recently with our county educators and our superintendents, and, you know, they've really stated to us that their greatest interest and goals for our kids here in our county is to get them back to in-person learning, and they've told us in no uncertain terms that that is their highest priority. So we've devised this method, along with our educators, of really very tightly cohorting our students, and we do this because we want to give our schools the best chance of remaining open. Cohorting students has to do with putting students into very small groups and then keeping those students within those small groups throughout the day, so that day in and day out, they're returning to the same groups, so that if one person gets sick, they're not compromising, you know, the other students that may be part of other cohorts. We have become concerned, after issuing our previous order regarding sports, that many of the activities that were planned for students have moved outside of the county, and so we're bringing forth just some more discussion and our concerns to you this evening. We worry that when we allow our students to go elsewhere to compete and then return back to Wyandotte County, that unfortunately, we've broken those cohorts, and we may be placing our children at risk. So it's not just about the kids, of course. We want to remind you that their parents and guardians, grandparents, et cetera, are really very at risk as well. We know that these children can easily spread the virus and such. Next slide, Julian. We want to also put forth this evening, we've been talking with our epidemiology team, we want to put forth for you sort of our plans and when we might close a school. We haven't talked about that yet together, but, you know, we plan that if there are two separate cohorts within a school building that are experiencing clusters of outbreaks, we feel that that would be the appropriate time to close a school for fear that that spread would become really quite a bit wider. We're also working with KDHE and our schools directly to define when we would close a school based on absenteeism, and for now, we're thinking that for in-person classes, you know, if absenteeism is 10% higher than last year's average, we would consider closing the schools at that time. Next slide. I wanted to also let you all know that unfortunately, we're seeing a lot of clusters that are coming out of sports play in our state. I wanted to highlight for you up above here, unfortunately, in our own community, the KCK volleyball club team has unfortunately had a cluster outbreak associated there, and then you can see on down from there, there have been several others. Unfortunately, some of them pretty large. Some of these sports are contact sports, but then again, not all of them are, and so we also wanted to highlight that unfortunately, these activities are causing or at the root of several different outbreaks that are happening currently. Next slide. I wanted to, finally, before we end and get to questions, just drive home this idea of preserving the cohorts so that our kids can get back to in-person learning. Again, that is our greatest goal. If you'll see there on the left-hand side, a mock-up of a school, you can see that the children are in their groups, A, B, and C cohorted. Next slide. When we allow our kids to go out and practice in a team-like setting or have activities together, they may be comprised of different cohorts, and so at that time, those kids would be getting together, and unfortunately, that's compromising the cohort at that point. Next slide. And then additionally, if we were to bus our children outside from the county, outside from areas where they're even doing these really intense cohorting plans, we're really worried actually about the spread of COVID to our kids that are from Wyandotte County. If our kids were to become infected in that setting, next slide. We worry that they would bring the virus back, and then it would spread really very quickly throughout the cohorts that we've laid out so carefully within our schools. Next slide. This is an extreme close-up of our cohorts. This highlights that, you know, we really, we can't make the decisions for the other kids in the class, you know, that are trying really hard to cohort. We just cannot put them at risk, you know, we cannot say, you know, "Well, we can go out and play and go elsewhere and whatnot," and then compromise those other people who may be trying really hard to stay into a cohort and stay safe in that way. So we worry that these activities do that. Next slide.
Last slide, Dr. Corvo.
Great, thanks. So that was our last slide. I'll kick it back to you, actually, Julian, and then perhaps we can go for questions. Thank you.
Yeah, we can go ahead and open for questions.
Okay, I want to start. Commissioner Mike Kane. Last weekend, there were over 2,000 racers over at Hy-Vee's Center. All summer long, our kids have been playing baseball, softball, soccer, all outside of Wyandotte County. Two of us Commissioners went to the Piper meeting the other day, and they agreed to follow all the guidelines that were provided. And I was sitting, and I thought, "Well, that's pretty good." But then the other day, I heard what Dr. Lee Norman said. When asking his press conference about youth sports, said the decision would be on each school, would we have been putting all precautions in place to mitigate the chance of exposure, but our kids are happy to be doing what they love. Now, I know that you said that there's no changes coming, but the stuff that you talked about is, we're already going outside the county. Several of us, I work in Wyandotte County, but several people that have kids that go to private schools are driving over to Johnson County. The Legends is open. We have all kinds of shoppers there now. The teams have done what they've asked to do. A gentleman talked to me a little while ago with the fifth grader, said his son wore a mask, it's 92 degrees outside, he's in fifth grade. When we followed those guidelines, when the school follows those guidelines, I don't know why any rumor would go out there or why we would have a presentation like this, because it sounds like you're setting up to shut this stuff down, and I do not like that at all. Something else, too, the doctor should not be the one that makes the decision. I guess there's something out there that if a decision is made like that, that the Commissioners can override the doctor, that I want to see, I saw a little bit of earlier. It's up to us. Our kids want to play ball? They want to play, and if any of you go look at the video the other day of the first gentleman that spoke, he shook from the top of his head down to the bottom of his shoes, talking about how important it was to him, and all of you have got emails all the last couple of days. And all of you have got emails all the last couple of days, and it's frustrating for me just now to have a meeting at 4:00 to tell us what you're actually going to talk about. But I want to remind everybody that I asked a question on August 13th and asked a clear question during the meeting about what the medical officers and the mayor would do to those playing competition games outside the county. The medical officer answered on the video was that they cannot control residents, what they do outside the county. That was August 13th in a Zoom meeting. Now all of a sudden, there's a rumor that we're going to shut down. You guys showed some stuff that you're concerned about. Somebody needs to go out there and watch these kids, pay attention to them talking. And I don't like being on Zoom because the chambers would be filled up tonight with not the parents, but the kids that would tell us, we really want to do this. And they actually feel that it's being dictated, and our approach on this is not what I like. And in my mind, it's not acceptable, and I know we haven't done anything, but before we do anything, we better make sure that everyone knows what's going on and something happened. But they're getting ready to start playing games Friday. And in my mind, we need to give our kids something. We've tied them up for a long time. Everyone wants to go out there and see their kid do something. Everybody wants to get out of the house. And then, but to all of a sudden, here we are in District 5. District 5 comes up, the school board did a great job, they got a fantastic new superintendent, everyone's trying to follow the guidelines, and all of a sudden, there's a rumor out there, well, we're not going to let them. Well, I don't believe it's up to the doctor. The state doctors already said that it's okay, leave it up to the school districts, and we should leave it up to the school districts. I don't want a doctor making a decision for who, one, doesn't live here and it's going to affect our kids.
Thank you, Commissioner Kane. Appreciate those comments. And I do believe still that there's nothing any of us can do to control what folks do outside of this county. You know, we've been in real close contact with our legal counsel here with everything we've done. I think a lot of the data we presented, to me, some of it boils down to the real clear evidence we have that stay-at-home orders work for reducing spread and reducing hospitalizations and reducing deaths. I think masks do that as well. The data is pretty clear that we're seeing a real major reduction in cases in the last month to six weeks with that. I think we're going to see less deaths in future weeks because of mask orders, as long as there's no other confounding variable that intervenes to increase spread in the coming weeks. I think it was our belief, and I believe that the mask order that's been in place for some time now suggests that if anyone is going to engage in things that put them within six feet of some other person for more than 10 minutes cumulatively over time, they would be wearing masks. And so the combination of masks and social distancing, I think, is something that we are just trying to promote that because if we think it reduces spread, we think it reduces hospitalizations, we think it saves lives. If sports can be conducted in such a way that people can wear masks and social distance, then we think it's going to reduce spread. And we don't think schools will end up having to be closed at as fast of a rate as they will if we're allowing things to happen in the county. It's my understanding that if a school is going to have a football game, say, in the state of Kansas, they have to have had 10 practices prior to that game. We just weren't aware that practices in the county were happening where close contact was occurring between individuals practicing and they were not wearing masks. That's something that was new to us as of exactly one week ago today. And that's where this conversation has come from, and that's where all this data has come from. So we want to continue this dialogue. And again, we don't want to make a decision now. We want to have a dialogue about what's safe and what is going to...
Are you going to close the Legends? Are you going to quit Sporting K? Are you going to stop them from playing soccer? This is a big deal. This is huge to the families. And I want everyone to be safe when they're following the guidelines. And all of a sudden, in my mind, I know that they feel out there in Piper that this was some sort of threat, and nobody likes that. And I have never, ever had so many phone calls, so many emails, just here in the last hour, five or six people saying, we can't do this. You know, we're elected to listen to the people, and as long as they follow those guidelines, they should play ball.
Commissioner Kane, again, I think routine and universal mask-wearing and routine and universal social distancing is what's going to get us through this with the least health impact. That's all I can say based on my training and my ability to review science. You know, if others feel like they've got better expertise in that arena, then...
How can the state doctor say, let the schools decide, and then our health department says, we're going to decide?
I think if we had the legal team, I don't know if Ken Moore's on and wants to weigh in on that, but I think that the legal team's interpretation of that is that that can't work that way.
Okay, but when I talked to Kenny earlier, he said there is a system in play where the commissioners could vote on this.
Kenny, are you on the call? I do not see Mr. Darius. Ken Moore, are you able to hear? Okay. It's not working. We'll come back, try and get that rectified. Commissioner McKeonan?
Thank you, Mayor. I do see that Ken is on. He dropped off for just a moment. Oh, he just dropped off again. So he must be having some connection difficulties. I think Commissioner Kane has hit upon the most crucial piece for all of us as we move forward from today, and that is to keep talking to each other. I think we've got to share in both directions. You know, I see Mr. Moore is back, and so I can suspend my comments and let him take over, although I'm not sure he's unmuted. So, Mr. Moore, if you want to go ahead and talk, I'll come back later. And Ken, we cannot hear you at the moment, so if you are unmuted, then you've got a
Commissioner McKeonan, go ahead.
All right. So, Ken, I'm going to go ahead and continue because I see by your graphic that you're unmuted, and yet we are not able to hear you. So what I want to just emphasize is that what we've done here today is, and we've done it before today, we just need to stay in touch with each other. We just need to keep each other constantly informed and constantly up to date and constantly informed about what's going on. Let's face it, everybody, we have given Dr. Greiner, Dr. Corvo, and Julianne Van Lu an impossible task. We've asked them to keep us healthy and productive and active all at the same time in the face of a virus that frankly doesn't care what we do. So we've got a true pandemic on our hands, and we've got to hit the right intermediate point between all of the ways that we could possibly go. And I think the only way we do that is we keep talking to each other. I want to really thank Dr. Greiner, Dr. Corvo, and Ms. Van Lu. I think we owe them a debt of gratitude. I think that anybody who's worked with them for any length of time, and I'm going to share this for those of you who haven't done that, anybody who's worked with them knows that these three people care very deeply about all of us in Wyandotte County. And they work really hard to make sure that our community is as healthy as it can be. And it's tough stuff because there is a pandemic here. We need to engage all of each other as allies in this and keep talking and keep refining. One of the things I really like about what they do is they are learning. They're constantly looking at the data, and from March 12th until today, they've learned new things. And as they've learned new things, they've shared those with us, and they've tried to implement changes in protocols as they've learned those new things. And I think that that's ultimately what's going to pay off. They pay attention to the data. They are willing to change protocols. They are willing to change regulations in what they believe is going to be the way that is the most beneficial to all of us. So we've just got to keep in communication with each other, keeping us... Anyway, I'll just stop it there and say again, I thank you for your continued work. We really owe you a debt of gratitude, and I say that we will all continue to communicate, and we will beat this.
Mr. Moore?
Yes, Mayor, I apologize. I have some technical difficulties. I guess the question was that the legislature in the special session did change the statutes that now allow the county commissioners to override a local health order, just like they changed the law to make it clear that the county commissioners can override the governor's executive orders. So that step is in place. I still believe that the local health orders are broad application and they're all encompassing throughout the county and are more broad than the school board's powers regarding their operations in this regard, in the health regard. I mean, for example, if we have a health emergency, the local health officer can order a school closed. And I think that would override any school board decision not to do so. So those are the two factors that we need to balance and keep in place.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, as always, to Dr. Corvo, Dr. Greiner, Julianne, to the health department. Guys are doing an amazing job for our community. And again, I will repeat, as I said in the past, I think Wyandotte is doing the best in taking this on because we're not making it political. We're looking out for our people and our people's health and safety, so thank you for that. Mike, just a quick comment. Commissioner McKeonan hit it right on the head. I see both sides of this argument, but then that means we need to have a conversation and find a compromise that works for everybody because that's the one thing in government that we all have to do, is compromise and having an open line of communication. And I just hope that we continue that in the future for anything. And I agree with Commissioner McKeonan, if we work together, listen to each other, we can get over this and we can overcome this and make Wyandotte County better than it was before. Thank you.
Commissioner Bynum?
Thank you, Mayor. Just had a couple of questions, if possible, on the slides, starting with the information from the actual KU Medical Center and the patients that are there. And my questions are relaying of questions and comments that folks were asking me over these last few days. With regard to KU and the hospitalizations, are we counting those that are Wyandotte? I know that, you know, many people that don't live in Wyandotte are hospitalized within KU Hospital. So it looked like one of your graphs had numbers among six and seven and eight people. And then another, I think Dr. Corvo had related 27 in isolation, yet actually 61. I would just, if you could spend two seconds clarifying the differences in the way that we're counting hospitalizations here in Wyandotte versus what might be happening at KU. My second question is, again, relaying to you from questions I've been receiving over the last few days, how do we relate to multitudes of other activities that may or may not be happening as we cross the border into Missouri or Leavenworth County or Johnson County? You know, folks that work in another community, come home here every night to their families, and especially as it relates to that discussion of the cohort within the classrooms. And lastly, if you could just confirm for me that it's your understanding that all of our educational institutions, I should say, at the middle and high school level had stated to you that the cohort was the way that they were planning to do instruction when instruction was taking place in person? But if you could just compare and contrast a little bit the concerns that you have particularly around the sports issue, or I should say, sports and other activities issues against the other comings and goings in and out of our community, and then confirming whether the cohort model is the model that's been chosen by our educators. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bynum. I can respond to your first question regarding the graphs that were referring to the KU hospitalized patients. I appreciate that question. Those were, of all the patients hospitalized there, not necessarily only Wyandotte County residents that were hospitalized there. It seems to me, over the course of this time, approximately a third to a half of the patients at KU are generally from Wyandotte County, although I could get you those more specific numbers. I was really trying to just make the point that there are actually quite a bit more or quite a higher number that are hospitalized there with COVID and still being treated for COVID than the numbers that we're often hearing. I'll then skip to the... Well, actually, I'll turn it to Dr. Greiner and let him speak to the second question that you asked.
I think the second question, I think, was getting, you know, what about people going elsewhere and doing activities and doing various things and then coming back, coming back to Wyandotte County where they reside? And of course, that's a big concern to us. And I think that, as Mr. Ramirez said, I think that there's some evidence, which we didn't present much of today, that in this county, we've actually done a better job with a lot of things over the past five to six months than other counties. You know, if you look at the Johnson County data today, it's on the upswing. And we hope that if people are going outside of our county, engaging in activities, they are prioritizing those two big interventions that I keep harping on, which is that that's wearing masks and social distancing when they're doing those activities. If people are doing that, that even if they're in a place where things are less restrictive, they're still protecting themselves and they're less likely to bring it back. And I think our concern is whenever we identify something that's happening that, you know, that might involve no masks and no social distancing, how can we mitigate spread when it relates to that? So we're aware that people are doing things all over the metro and interacting with folks in different ways and different settings. But we hope they're being careful, and we want to keep pushing that message of being careful and trying to structure what we can, you know, to reduce those episodes where transmission occurs. So now you get the cohort question.
Now, I'll get the cohort question regarding the question of, we had talked with our various educators. Yes, we have been in close conversation with our superintendents and also the archdiocese throughout this pandemic. And really, very early on, you know, we, once we started thinking about reopening the county, we very quickly... Once we started thinking about reopening the county, we very quickly got together a very large group of educators. That then was divided into early education and and school age kids and then higher education and worked together for a long time. Most recently, as we've returned to this issue of school reopening and we're getting closer and closer. We've been working especially hard with our with all of our superintendents and also the archdiocese. We had talked a lot about cohorting and each of them have submitted plans to us about their school reopenings. And they had agreed that cohorting was a good way to go and that it kind of took a lot of. Discussion and creativity to to get us there, but I think we all got there together.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrows?
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I want to thank everyone who's participating this evening. This is an issue that's of significance to our community. And so thank you, Dr. Corvo. Thank you, Dr. Greiner and those who are charged with watching over our community. I do have a couple of questions. This goes back kind of what Commissioner Bynum had asked. The we have a mutual aid with our public safety officials. And should they have to respond to an incident outside of our community to support a mutual aid? Are we going to request that they be quarantined or what steps would we take? If there was a potential for them to be. Infected and or come in contact with with someone in an emergency situation? And then I guess my my second question would be the. The letter, what we're dealing with is we haven't had, quote, an incident with our athletes. By this three-letter word called yet. And so if we should choose to allow school districts to participate in sports. And allow our athletes to do that. There the rumor is, and that's why we're all here this evening, that we're going to ask them to quarantine and the cohorting comes into play. This goes back to question number one. But when we have those incidents, are we willing to maybe look at a? Twenty-five day trial period, a fifteen day trial period? In our schools have the resources in place. The parents have been educated, the students have been educated. That this is a health issue. And to what extent do does it come time to let the community and or the parents determine? What is best for their families and another elected body to make a decision, that being the school districts? So thank you. I know it was a little meshed together, but I wanted to throw that out and. Wait, await your answers. Thank you.
Yeah, I think on the on the emergency response issue and assisting in 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 other environments. We we would, we would hope, and I think this has been true in healthcare, that that those folks would be. Be utilizing personal protective equipment. I think our our police force and firefighters and others have. We've worked a ton with them and and they they know how to use personal protective equipment. They know that they they probably should use it universally. They should just assume everyone they interface with has COVID. They've been doing that in the county. So I think we would assume if they went out of county, they would do that too. And and so they would not have to quarantine coming back in because they're 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 using PPE. In fact, in the healthcare environment, right? If you, I've seen COVID patients myself, right? And and if I have the appropriate protection on, then I'm not required to go into quarantine, even if I spent thirty minutes in exam, in an exam room with that patient. That that sounds probably hypocritical to people, but that's that's the way healthcare entities all over the country are working. Right now, I think I think in terms of of, say, a community decision and and a twenty-five day trial period. I think we are seeing some interesting things in in some in some settings. Say with professional sports, for example, with with professional baseball, professional football. There's a ton of resources getting poured into those trials and lots and lots of testing and lots and lots of work on cohorting that group of individuals. Whether it's the coaches or the teams. I think, you know, if we were going to try something and I and I, you know, we're always open to innovative, creative things. It's it's a resource issue to some extent, too. What what you can safely pull off and and protect everybody involved when you when you're trying something out that. That might lead to cases and 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 spread beyond a small group.
Thank you for that, Dr. Greiner. Again, this is Commissioner Burrows. I would just state that I don't believe there's one elected official in our community, or statewide for that matter. That wants to put our children at risk. And this this is an issue that is of much importance to the families in our community as well as across the state. I think there's the the real issue is here, are we treating our kids in a punitive manner? Or is the message all wrong? I mean, I value each and every life in our community. And I know the parents are struggling and I know the students are struggling. We need answers and the medical answers we're getting may not suffice enough. It may be as a community and as stated by Commissioner Ramirez about that communication being critically important. I truly believe that 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 is a great assistance in resolving these issues. This pandemic has allowed a lot of us to reconsider how we want to lead this community. And I respect the work that all of the health professionals are providing us and the guidance they're providing us. But at some point, we have to also provide the mental health aspect that this pandemic has caused them. We have to recognize that. And that that can come into play also. And this, the the approach of the parents wanting these students to participate in sports. I can understand, appreciate. It's not just sports. It's it's other events, whether it be the arts, musical events, whatever it may be. But the education aspect through our educational community, I truly trust that they are doing all they can to protect their kids. I don't believe there's an elected school board member that wants to see any of our kids infected. And so I I will leave the, I will leave this with you, Dr. Greiner and Dr. Corvo. We need, we need some assistance here as a community to find a resolve. That's not punitive, but that is understandable and offers a safeguard without being heavy handed. And that is a fine line to walk. I value each and every one of you and I value each and every one of the children in this community. And like many of the other elected leaders that are here this evening. If if we could all be king for a day, how would we solve it? I don't want to be king for a day, but I do want to be part of a community that understands and respects and values each and every one of us. So again, thank you for the opportunity to visit with you on this issue. And I sincerely respect and appreciate what information you're providing us this evening.
Dr. Corvo, I want to go back to the 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 process of cohorting. And I know that this has been widely adopted by schools across the country. And again, the the purpose of cohorting is to create a small grouping of fifty percent of the normal capacity of a classroom. Those students stay with them, stay together all day, they eat together, they take breaks together. They probably, if they they don't change classrooms anymore, right? They're because they're having to disinfect the classrooms. And so the this way, if the purpose from the superintendents, the desire of the superintendent, the school board. And I hear this from so many people is we really want to get back to school. And so working with the superintendents, you have come up with this and others have come up with this process of cohorting. That does not, in fact, eliminate all spread because we're not, we're not talking about eliminating all spread. What we're saying is if a student were to come into the classroom. And again, anywhere from forty to forty-five percent of the people with the virus are asymptomatic, don't even know they have the virus. So a kid comes to school with the virus. We we, they wear masks in class, they social distance, they sanitize all the surfaces to reduce the risk. But it's very possible that that virus could be still be spread. We know that. And so that cohort, then, if we do come up with a positive, that cohort can then be quarantined for fourteen days. In order to prevent the spread to the other cohorts.
That's correct, Mayor. Yes, yes, we again are. Trying really hard to keep as as many kids as possible and in school. And I want to get back to, you know, partly partly what you you you're talking about and the the importance of this. But also Commissioner Burrows comments, I think, were. Important. I I want to emphasize that. These are really difficult times for us to to think about what to do next, you know, to to keep everyone as. As safe as possible and also, you know, of course, there there are a lot of loud voices right now on on this issue. And I think there are also probably just as many voices that are not as loud, that are afraid. And we talk to a lot of those people in in private and receive emails from from them as well. I'm sure many of you do too. But I I want to say that I. I, it is a fine line and, you know, we don't want to take hope away from our young people. I mean, I. We we actually really just want to prioritize, I guess, the in-classroom learning and. And allow them to receive their education. And and we have prioritized that over over other extracurricular activities at this point. Although I realize that extracurriculars and sports is learning in and of itself and and extremely important for development of our kids. So so I get, we're just having a rough time with how to how to balance that, you know?
Understand. And 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 so the the point I think that I'm taking from this is. When whether people go outside and they play in close contact. Is there any evidence that close contact does not result, cannot result in infection?
If the two people are not infected, I I think that I think the reduction in in. That spread when people are in close contact is is impressive when we wear masks. There is evidence to show that when we're in cloth masks, I think the reduction is. You know, thirty to forty percent. If we're in paper masks and they're not, they're not, as we say, sweat through or soiled, you know? Probably get a reduction of about sixty-five percent or so of that spread, you know? And those N95s are really the way to go, you know, we get ninety-five percent reduction. So yeah, that that's really it. So that's, I mean, we're trying really to just decrease that chance.
So again, I guess my point I'm trying to make is there is, there is evidence. In fact, we have had infections within Wyandotte County athletic activities. You mentioned the volleyball club, so there have been.
Yes.
To do that. So there is evidence and more and more evidence that close contact in athletic activities do spread the virus. But there is absolutely no evidence that it does not spread the virus. I want to be clear about that.
Rest.
Lee, I I would like to say that, need to say that these measures that we're putting in place are always about trying to protect. And that what we've seen is all these measures are incremental. No one thing does it completely. And even when a stay-at-home order, there is still transmission because people still have to go out for essentials. But we want to make sure we don't have to go back to that. And we're going to do whatever we can to stop the spread as much as possible. And yet you're trying to balance that with getting kids back into school for in in classroom instruction, which is very important. So that's the primary goal and we can't sacrifice that for for other things. I would like to say I've heard the same thing that Commissioner Kane has heard. That, you know, we're we're dictating and, you know, having been the disciplinarian at a high school and a teacher and a coach. It's all about dictating. It's all about saying, you will do this, you will not do this. And you do that because there is a greater vision at stake. You are saying, this is who we want to become. This is what we want to become. And so in order for us to become this, we must do these things. We must not do these other things. It's all about dictating. Football itself dictates everything, one hundred yards by forty yards, four downs, four quarters. You know, it's it's all dictation. There are limits. That's how the game is played. That's really where the the glory of the game is, comes out. We, I think also, we have to keep in mind. If we weren't talking about COVID, we'd be talking about concussions. And the amount of resources that schools have put in to mitigate concussions. And how that has changed the face of of football and other sports is astounding. And so what we were willing to do to stem concussions for the long-term damage that brings to to children. We also have to do for this. And if if we, if we keep that in mind, that we dictate, you cannot rough the passer. You you cannot take the the quarterback to the ground and pound him to the ground. That's dictated. You cannot do that and that's simply done for safety. We're not just talking about the kids in in the classroom. We're also talking about their teachers. We're talking about staff. We're talking about administrators. And of course, we're talking about the community at large. And, you know, I think about this, if. If I, I, we know as dean and student, it's one of my responsibilities was to handle all the security for all the athletic events. And when we start first obtained lightning detectors, we had a game with seven thousand people in attendance, a very important playoff game. And both teams were ready to go. They started the game. We had the lightning detector. We started seeing the lightning move closer and closer. And we had to move to the place where we had to evacuate and cancel that game. That was not a punishment. That is a consequence. And I think we ought to be clear, there are consequences, natural consequences of actions and there are punishments. Telling people that they cannot engage in close contact is not a punitive measure. It is simply a safety measure that is a consequence of a virus. So I want to go right now to this. The enemy here is not our public health department. It is not the elected officials. It is not administrators. It is the virus. The virus is going to do what the virus wants to do. What we must do is pay attention to the virus, discover what it is, how it moves, what its effects are, and decide what we can do to stop that. Every time we veer off of that, every time we take our eye off the virus, we lose track of what we're about. Because the virus is dictating to us. And if we don't dictate to the virus, it will take us where we don't want to go. And we've seen that time again. I think of my own mother, again, who has not been able to come out of the building since March fifteenth. That was not punishment. That is a consequence. And finally, you know, the the mental health, having worked in schools, high schools for thirty-one of my professional years. I understand very well how important athletics are to the individual student, to the family, to the community, to the school. It's it's clear to me and everything we need to do to try and make that happen needs to happen. But. We would never sacrifice, I would never have allowed the game to go on with lightning coming in. I was not going to be that person who was going to have to answer the question, why did you not evacuate the stands? Why did you keep playing this game and people died? When you have the power and the authority to do it, you did not stop it. Not one of us. I don't care if whether it's the governor, the president, the the health department. An administrator, a teacher, a coach wants to say, I could have done something to stop death and I did not do it. So I'm very passionate about this because we have to look at the virus. The virus is kicking us. Stop arguing with one another. Stop complaining about the measures that are taken. Stop complaining about masks. Stop complaining about having to slow down. If we do what we need to do to slow the virus, we take control and not let the virus control us. So having said on that, I think it's time for us to move to our next topic in the in the. On on or on three. Doug, how much time do we need for this next?
Mayor, I would say it'll probably take forty-five, fifty minutes at least to go through it. I believe the presentation runs a good half hour plus to move through this, so. And I figured there'll be some Q and A after.
Okay, well, I'm going to, we have one more. Commissioner Burrows, we got a brief comment and then we'll go on to the next topic.
Thank you, Mayor, and and I appreciate your comments. I I would just like to, I think it's important that we let the community know where we are tonight on this issue. Has anything changed? Is there any proposed changes coming? I think it's important that they have an opportunity to to know where we are this evening.
Well, I can probably just leave it with, there is no change from what has come out this evening. I believe from the information our doctors presented, they are continuing to evaluate the situation and review it. And, you know, there's been changes that have come across. Over the last five months, so there could be things that could come back for additional discussion on it. But there is no change made to any rules or orders that are in place. But there is no change made to any rules or orders that are in place today.
Thank you. All right. We'll go on now to the next item for consideration, a presentation regarding the Central Avenue Master Plan. Thank you, Doctors Corvo and Griner and Julianne Denly. Thank you.
All right, Mayor. So this next item, as you said, is regarding the Central Area Master Plan. We have been working on this for some time and I'm going to turn this over to our planning department. We have Kim Porte with our planning staff and Jamie Granger, who is our consultant with Interface Studios, who are going to do the presentation tonight. Kim, are you going to take it from here?
I'll take it from here. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. Hope everyone's doing well. Yeah. So we have been working on the Central Area Master Plan for the last year. We are getting close to wrapping it up and we're in the final stages. The hot topic COVID did throw us off a little bit with our public engagement. So just as we were about to engage in our final public meeting, the COVID started happening. So we moved to an online presence where we started doing online public engagement. We actually had some pretty good interaction on that. And now we are moving on to the steps of putting together the draft plan, getting input, and then moving on to putting together the final master plan. So Jamie with Interface Studios has some updates and presentation for you guys. And we really want to get your input on where this is going, if it's the direction that you expect it to be in, and if the implementation items are things that you agree with and all of that. So I'll turn it over to Jamie.
Thank you, Kim. I appreciate everyone taking the time and allowing me to, to, you know, present tonight. I understand a planning process can seem trivial, you know, with everything kind of going on in the world. But, you know, appreciate you allowing me this opportunity to share the process. I'm going to share my screen real quick. Is everyone able to see the screen? Kim, can you give me some? Okay. So I know some of you have been involved in the process, others haven't. We shared with you a draft. Fully understand that, you know, probably everyone hasn't got a chance to read it. So hopefully we're going to share some of the, you know, a little bit about the process and some of the recommendations and hopefully get some of your feedback. When we're talking about the central area, it's really this area to the southwest of downtown bounded by six thirty-five and seventy. And then the northern border being state and Armstrong and downtown being kind of cut out from that area. But really this is a collection of smaller neighborhoods, all with kind of their unique, you know, their own and unique identity. We got the opportunity to meet with all these neighborhood organizations and they were involved in the process. I won't dwell on this too long, as, as Kim kind of touched about on this. We started about probably a year ago, towards the end of last summer, really in earnest, we're gearing up towards a, a spring completion. Obviously things changed. We had to change course. But now, we, as we've developed a draft plan, we've been sharing it with either the planning commission, variety of U G departments, our steering committee, all trying to get feedback. Going to take a lot of that feedback and really come up with a final plan that will eventually be voted on. Just a little bit about our process. It's really community and data-driven. We try to get as much input from the community as possible, do a lot of research and analysis. And really the combination of those two really leads to a vision and recommendations and ultimately some strategies. In regards to outreach, we tried to reach as many people in a variety of different ways. We did that through individual interviews, variety of public events. We had a presence at some larger parades. We met with all the neighborhood meetings, some multiple times. We had some focus groups about some key topics. And then as COVID happened, we transitioned a lot of the, the outreach to an online survey. And we got some great input from that as well. Just some bigger topics and things that we've heard from that outreach process. You know, we asked a series of questions across all of this outreach, one of which being, what are the things you value most about the neighborhood? The number one response being the community, second being diversity, and then third being businesses and restaurants. And then a more forward-thinking question about, what do you want the central area to be in the future? The top two answers were welcoming community and a clean and well-maintained community. In regards to, you know, a lot of the research that we did to supplement that outreach, there are a few other key factors that we determined that were important. The central area is a lower-income community compared to both the, this city at large and the state. So, you know, there's obviously consequences to deal with that. People really love their homes, but there's concern about affordability and maintenance. There's a desire to change the mobility status quo. I think ninety-three percent of residents commute to work by car, according to the census. Central Avenue plays a central role in the community. There's a variety of different commercial corridors. But central is really that one that kind of connects all these different neighborhoods. And then also that parks are an important community gathering places that could use upgrades. We kind of took all of that information and developed a vision supported by four separate goals. The four goals being around Central Avenue specifically, about housing, some about mobility and another about community. And I'll go into each one of these specifically with a little more detail. So the, the first goal is to establish Central Avenue as a social, cultural and employment center of the neighborhood. There's a few different strategies associated with that. The first being to create a place on Central Avenue through physical improvements. The second is to leverage the diversity to create a unique identity and market opportunity. And then the third being ongoing resources for existing businesses. So one of the first, I'll walk you through a few of the action items. I probably don't have time to go through all of them, so I called out just a few important ones. First one being the idea around redesigning Central Avenue and key locations. We see really kind of four areas that will benefit from this the most is really the areas that have the highest concentration of businesses. One of which is kind of the changes to the street have already happened. It's really that eastern side, east of Seventh, around Slaps and Split Lot Coffee. There used to be a turn lane down the middle that was removed and angle parking was introduced. You know, it slowed down traffic. It's, it's increased amount of parking spaces, added some pedestrian amenities. You know, I don't think it's a coincidence that a lot of the investment that's taken place on central happened in that location. But in the majority of the stretch of central looks something like this. It's got a continuous turn lane, faster-moving cars, limited parking. So the idea that came up through the process and was really to kind of reintroduce that condition that happens on the eastern end across this Central Avenue corridor and some of those key locations. This will help support businesses with additional parking, improve pedestrian access, and all of these things that kind of came out of the process. So when just thinking about what this could physically look like, this is just west of Seventh. You can see how it, it kind of really impacts the neighborhood and that particular stretch adds significant amount of new parking. And it really just creates more of a commercial vibe on, on Central Avenue that's, that's currently not existing. Another action item is about improving some of these pocket parks. Central Avenue cuts at an interesting angle and leaves these kind of leftover spaces. One more prominent is Eighteenth and Central. Really heard a lot in the process about how this is a really critical intersection. It's really the start of the corridor, the commercial section of the corridor. There were some recent investments that have been done to truncate Park Drive. But can we kind of reallocate some of our parking space and really make this more of a community gathering space? In addition to Eighteenth and Central, there's some other gateway opportunities that can really welcome people to the corridor and really build off of its identity. One being the far eastern side, you know, this is the, really the first impression a lot of people get of Central Ave and, and even Kansas. So how can we really make it more engaging that really reflects the unique identity on the Central Ave? And this is something that can be done, the design process of this can be done in coordination with businesses and residents to really determine something that's fitting for the corridor. We also see a big opportunity around La Placita Food Market, which takes place in Bethany Park. There's a variety of different programming events that happen on the corridor, but La Placita probably has the most potential to really bring people back to the corridor on a reoccurring basis. And it also really plays off a lot of the strengths within the central area being its diversity, diverse food that takes place. And in times of COVID, it, it, there's also an, an opportunity to really provide healthy food options for residents and really a socially-distanced area. So, you know, it's something that can be improved on. When I specifically residents identified a kind of a permanent presence within Bethany to help support the market, either through a market shed or something similar. So that's something to consider as well. And this is just a, you know, how a lot of these strategies could kind of play out and really make a unique space on Central Ave. We asked specifically, you know, if there's one place residents would want to invest on Central, where would it be? And it's really that stretch between Thirteenth and Eighteenth. So that, you know, when we start thinking about implementation, focusing on that area makes a lot of sense. The second goal is to provide housing as suitable for a range of life stages and economic circumstances. Strategies being to provide support and resources for existing homeowners and also to add to housing, to diversify options and support broader community goals. Something that came up in the process was code enforcement and kind of maintenance of housing. Through our analysis portion of, of the planning process, we did a block-by-block survey of the block condition, took into account things like vacancy or maintenance, and really broke it up into areas that were trending up or places that were trending down. So by targeting some of the code enforcement of the areas that are trending down, all of it done in coordination with resident input in that residents are really the eyes and ears of the community. And they can help code enforcement really make a distinction between and, you know, an elderly individual who can't maintain their house versus an absentee landlord. You know, that's an important distinction to make. Another issue that came up is, is the challenges with home repair. You know, it's in older housing stock, a lot of residents have issues maintaining their houses. There are a variety of different programs that exist that kind of prevent houses from becoming vacant. You know, there's a process in that small maintenance issue turns into a large issue and then ultimately the, the buildings abandoned. And then the unified government has to deal with it kind of on the tail end through rehabilitation or demolition or some of those other tools that exist. So are there opportunities going to interject earlier on in the process? This is something that came up in the northeast area master plan as well. So it kind of lends to a broader citywide opportunity to address some of those issues and help residents. In terms of new housing, we see there an opportunity with the infill housing strategy. And when we say that, it's really looking to lower the barriers of entry to, for development and costs and some of those five stages associated with development. There's a big opportunity just due to the fact that the land bank owns a significant amount of holdings in the central area. So some of those costs can be lowered. There's opportunities for pre-approved blueprints or relationship with contractors, all of those things that can bring new housing to market at a lower cost. And there's also partnerships to be made kind of on that fifth section as well about developers who have a different business model, not necessarily profit-driven. And coordinating with them, CHWC already does a lot of work within the central area. And then finally, in this section is codifying some of the zoning of major parcels. Concurrently with our process, the city has also been updating the zoning code. So it's important that some of the zoning changes really reflect the community's desire for some of these larger development sites. Seventh and Central is an obvious one that came up throughout the process and that it sits just adjacent to a lot of the good activity that's been going on in, on the eastern end of Central. So can, you know, the, the regulations that exist really build off of that? The, you know, good work that's already, and investments that have already been done. Obviously, this is a privately-owned parcel, so there's only so much control. But inevitably, it's, if the developer would need to come to the city for something, having these, a vision for the site and the zoning to back it up is an important step. Some of the other sites that came up are the Bethany Hospital, former Bethany Hospital site, as well as Alcott Arts site. So, you know, part, those are in a way more challenging sites and there's a lot of moving parts. But I think through this process, we started levels of communication with all those involved that will, you know, be, be involved as those developments take place and make sure, you know, they're addressing the community's needs. The third goal is to design a mobility network that gives options and promotes a sense of community. The first strategy is to improve the comfort and safety of the pedestrian network, develop a bike and trail network, and then increase transit and shared mobility ridership to improve connections. You, an integral piece of a, a real pedestrian network is our sidewalks. Many streets within the central are lacking sidewalks. So in an ideal world, every street would have, would get a new sidewalk. But, you know, it's the financial realities kind of are up, that we're up against in, in doing something like that. So we took the approach of really focusing on some of the streets that would benefit the most because they have access to a lot of different institutions and things that residents value or will be walking to either a business or a park entrance or a school, a church, all of those things. And where can we kind of concentrate resources? And as specifically residents really called out those sidewalks adjacent to streets, so calling out specific routes to streets where some of that targeted investment can take place. It's some of the major north-south streets within the corridor are significant barriers for residents crossing east-west. If you look at this map, this calls out Eighteenth, Tenth, Seventh and Sixth. The square box is being intersections with crosswalks. You can see in Eighteenth, there's, you know, it's, it is a wide street, but it's, there are opportunities to cross. But when you look at places like Tenth, you have to walk almost two-thirds of a mile before you get to a designated crosswalk. So, you know, these are serious impediments to a safe pedestrian network for residents. Residents really had a strong desire to improve upon the existing bike network and really provide, you know, to ensure that this plan calls out improved infrastructure. So really people would feel safe biking through the central area and interconnected network. The existing bike lanes on Tenth and there's some in, in-lane sharrows on Central. You know, this is an ideal network that would most likely be built up over time. And this really builds off of the sidewalk and trail master plan as kind of a base. But there's some opportunities to extend the existing network and really make some other strong connections, particularly to the river. That came up through the process as well and tap into some of the larger trail network that's, that takes place throughout the city and the region. Residents called out Minnesota as one earlier implementation piece. And, and, you know, there's just a graphic of what something like that could look like. This is at the, near the Eighteenth and Center, Minnesota intersection. Part of that has to do with Minnesota is such a wide street that you could install bike infrastructure without really changing the, the main dynamics of the street. And then more of an immediate implementation piece, the unified government's working on a bike share program. And there's, you know, there's an opportunity to install bike share locations throughout the central area, particularly on Central, Central Avenue. And when you, you know, look at the, it, it makes a lot of sense to install where the existing bike infrastructure work. And when you, you know, look at the, it it makes a lot of sense to install where the existing bike infrastructure work already exists. So Tenth and Central, you know, is an integral piece of that. And then when you, if you tie that in with improved part investments to parks like Lally Park, you can really see how, you know, there's a concentration of investment in in one place can have a broader impact. And then the final goal is to empower residents to build community through shared neighborhood improvements. A first strategy being improve existing green space. Second being beautify neighborhoods and activate and utilize lots. And then finally, creating inclusive environments accessible to all. There's a variety of planned park improvements that are already existing. One being in Clifton Park. So there's opportunity for that to be really in early stage implementation. And it'll address some connectivity issues and some amenities. And something else that came up through the process is the vacant building that exists in Clifton Park and a desire to make that a community amenity. There's a UG program Stories for Stories that's working to paint the the building and really draw attention to it. And you know, that's that's a good way to kind of start the initial conversation about what a more permanent solution could be. And then Bethany Park came up as well as as a park that could use some investment as really kind of the central gathering place for the community. There's opportunities to coordinate with the land bank on end of the undeveloped parcels. There, you know, are a large number of vacant properties within the central area, many of which are owned by the land bank, some of which probably don't have a lot of development potential because of the steep slopes or or other issues. So what is the really the long-term solution for what some of those parcels are? So you know, there's an opportunity for the land bank to start that conversation with resident organizations about you know, turning some of those spaces into assets either through programmed gardens or return them to kind of a natural state, whatever it is that can really help support the community. And then finally, you know, the this really touches on one of the, you know, the the number one thing that residents talk about is they value community, which is always a challenge in in such a diverse place as the central area. And there are some large-scale events that bring people from all over to the central area, but there was really a desire for some of these smaller scale neighborhood events. Things like community dinners, block parties, interfaith gatherings, all these things that provide a more intimate setting that allows residents to really interact and socialize. So there's strategies around that as well. So again, I'm just gonna, you know, come back to where we started. We really have the draft plan. Hopefully, you've all been able to take a look. We originally were planning on the planning commission and you all voting next month, but the timing didn't necessarily work out. So we actually have two months to work through edits throughout the process. Hopefully, we'll, we have a little bit of time for some questions and comments this evening. If not, you know, within that timeframe, we're extremely welcoming comments either through email or you can get in touch with any of us. Really just general comments. It will be helpful for us to know if there's something adamantly opposed to. So we can kind of tweak that or if there's things that you think are missing. And then also, are there opportunities to learn a little bit more about potential opportunities for implementation, either through partnerships or funding? So again, I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to to speak tonight and hopefully we can have a little bit of time for discussion.
So with that, we'd like to open it up for questions or comments that you guys might have for us.
Commissioner McCarron.
You kind of figured it would be me, didn't you? Hey, I want to say thank you to to the group. I think that you've done a great job through what about about half, a little over halfway through our process. COVID knocked us a little bit off of our trajectory, but I think you've done a great job with staying focused. I really like how you've come up with the goals and the possible possible objectives under that. You've given us a lot to think about, but I think it has really coalesced really well. What I hear anyway, as the priorities of the folks in the various neighborhoods. So I think your goals and your objectives are stretch for us in many ways. But if we can accomplish even some of them, we're going to have a markedly improved neighborhood or or central area. And so I just want to confirm now, at this point, you're planning to put this draft out online and then gather additional feedback to this? Is that what I heard?
Yeah, so the the draft report has much more information than I shared with you. We gave a similar presentation to the planning commission, I guess it was last week or two weeks ago, and got some input. We gave a presentation to the steering committee, which was mostly made up of residents. And then we also, I I think Kim, maybe you can jump in. I think this was put online on the the website that was set up when we kind of changed a lot of our outreach and put a lot of it online. So there's opportunities for residents to engage and provide comment as well.
Yeah, we met with CABA as well, the Central Avenue Betterment Association. So we push it out to their membership. And then, yeah, we've met with some of the stakeholders and pushed it out that way as well. And then we have it up on our online presence page.
Okay, so I did want to clarify one thing. What's out online? Because I haven't had a chance to go look at it yet. Is it the much longer, more detailed document or is it just this presentation?
It's the full draft.
Perfect.
You know, there are some obvious placeholders. But you know, we'll go through a variety of different revisions in the draft before we come to a final draft that will ultimately be voted on. So there are, you know, there are some things missing. One being the update to the land use and zoning is that's kind of still ongoing. But there, you know, there's a lot of information there, more so than than what we discussed tonight.
Well, I just want to say very much appreciate your work. You have really given us a a plan, a document, a goal that if we can move down that road, we're going to make marked improvements in the central area. So thank you.
Thanks. Jamie, could you go back, pull up the presentation again, or Kim, whoever has the screen? And go to the, I think the five-step process. I think it might have been the third or fourth slide. Nope, you have to move forward from that.
Yes.
No, no. Going, keep going. I can see the side scroll, so go ahead and go back, go back. Further, go back to like earlier. Okay, I don't know what I'm looking for. Shoot, it was the the five different.
Maybe it's that's the key factors.
No, it was not that. I'm sorry. Keep going. I'll see if I find otherwise, I'll I'll have a private conversation with you, but it was the things that are kind of instrumental basically in bringing some new development the process. It was.
Oh, okay, I know what you're talking about. This one.
Yes, that one. Thank you. So and if you look at the last one, the process takes less time. So that's not a a discreet piece that is describing that if you do all these things, cost associated development process takes less time. I think one of the things in here, it's kind of, it's almost included when you say pre-approved blueprints. But the the process during which or in which a developer or rehabber works with the unified government, I think is its own cost, especially in terms of time. And I don't know that it's really well described or represented here. And I think we have to really focus on that for our own purposes because we have to look at that that whole process from the beginning of of, you know, offering, you know, plan review all the way through final inspection. Our part in that can either accelerate or slow down that development and that when when it's a slower process or there are too many obstacles or too many bumps in that process, it discourages new development. So I'm not sure how that could be represented here, but I think we have to represent that simply in order for us to attend to our piece of that. Because a lot of this is focused on, you know, what what the construction does, what the lenders do, the developer does. But our piece in this, I I don't see it represented so well.
Yeah, I think that's a valid point. And I, you know, the the challenge is that the UG probably is involved in in most of these steps. So, you know, there's, there's an opportunity to rework this graphic to really better stress that. But I think the intention of this is that, you know, a lot of these things are kind of already in place. You know, the the land bank already has, you know, is successful, has a lot of holdings. There are some already made relationships with contractors and a lot of the rehab. Some of the newer things being pre-approved blueprints. See, this is kind of a newer idea that that cities have been taking. And you know, you can, it would require further study. But to determine, you know, a few different housing typologies that are consistent with the neighborhood that a developer could kind of go to and and use. Because, you know, at least for a small developer, some of those upfront costs are the most the most difficult things and paying for an architect, paying for those things. So really lowering the barriers of entry for that and and, you know, you're allowing more people into the process rather than some, some of the larger developers who have the capital to really deal with some of those upfront costs.
Yep.
But I think it's a really important point that you made in that yes, the unified government should, you know, should be represented more in this graphic and and we can make some adjustments.
Yeah. In fact, I I would say that we probably need to include in there the other development costs such as sewer hookup, water hookup and power hookup. But that's for another conversation.
Right. Yeah, I mean, this is a is a very simplified graphic of the actual development process.
I understand. Thank you. Commissioner Philbrook.
Well, would you put up the picture or showing the whole area that's included in the Central Avenue? Thank you. Either one of those will work. Okay, so I have a very little bitty, bitty part in this and that's just west of Thirty-Eighth Street over to Six Thirty-Five and south of State. And I have really a request. And that is that we move that little section right through there into a State Avenue improvement area because it really is totally different and so different from the rest of that area that I don't think that it can get or has gotten appropriate treatment. Okay, because I already know that one of the biggest complaints is being able to walk from Thirty-Eighth Street West. Okay, and I know it's, I know it's a quagmire and I'm not asking for money right now. I'm just saying that I think that that section should be put in a State Avenue improvement sort of thing over where we have it now. That's all. That's just my request. Because that way, when we look at improvement along State Avenue, we can put that in there too, because there's a lot to be done along there. That's that's my request.
Yeah, I mean, that's a valid point in that, you know, that that part of our study area is is so removed from the rest of the neighborhood.
Yes.
And not many people actually live there, at least living people. So yeah. It's almost its own kind of thing. I think you're exactly right.
But that is a walking corridor if they really could walk from their west. Okay, the the only safe way to get there is by car or bus.
Right.
Areas. And so that makes it really hard on the folks that that take a bus into that point. You know, or try to take about bus out of that point. So I just would ask that it be moved over. Like I said, I'm not asking for money right now. I'm just asking it be considered in a different section. That's all. Thanks, Jamie.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, I think that concludes. Thank you so much for your presentation. We will reconvene at seven o'clock.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.